Here.
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 We have a quorum. Good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and turn it over right away to Brian Uvaro to talk about streets funding and capital improvement plan. Good morning, Brian.
Thank you and good morning, your honor and members of the council. Yes, following the agenda on today's session meeting, I'm just going to give you a little bit of background on more so on our MSA municipal state aid routes. And then also our PCI, agenda item two, and then some, I have a list of some potential projects too that we've been evaluating for the next five years, which is agenda item number three. So just to begin with, we're going to start with, I just want to give you a little background in regards to municipal state aid system, which is the city of Fergus Falls. I'm going to start out with the, of a municipal state aid city, the city of Fergus Falls being one of them, population over 5,000. Uh, we are eligible for to collect state aid payments through municipal state aid. Now, um, we can allocate 20% of our citywide and street network to an MSA route system. So I'm going to turn to the projector right here just to, this is the official MSA map of the city of Fergus Falls. I know it's kind of hard to tell and everything, but if you look closely at this map, you can see the official designated routes of the city of Fergus Falls. Uh, they're patched green, uh, dash green segments within the street, street network. We also have corresponding road numbers here as well for these designations. But like I mentioned, as it stands, this is our official designated route of the 20%, if I can recall correctly, of our designated mileage, I think we have one hundredth of a mile undesigned. So, um, like I said, we're, we're designating as much as we can on the system. So moving on, if you go, if you want to back up just a little bit, back to, uh, with the mileage, also trunk highways are turned back to the city and they're added to it as additional mileage. Every January, we do a certification of mileage, it's reviewed and everything and submitted to the state and everything, but like I mentioned, we have about, um, one hundredth of a mile undesigned.
Does that change, Brian, just quick question, does that change? Do, does that change from year to year or from time or does that?
No, it, it's seldom, it, it can. I can't remember a few years ago, we did some, uh, we, it's usually designating and revoking some mileage. We've made some adjustments over a few years, but annually we look at it. Just want to note the mileage we have designated are usually our highest needs, our highest traffic flows and everything as well. Hence, as I move on, I'll indicate that's how we draw our money proportions. Uh, but yes, it has changed in a few years. I can't remember last time. I think a few years ago when we did the city county jurisdictional swap, we had to do that designations at that time too, so.
Okay, thanks.
So, so where's all this money come from? So ultimately this money, uh, is funded from the highway users tax distribution fund, which consists of fuel tax, motor vehicle sales tax, license fees, auto parts tax, et cetera. Um, I've included a brochure, a MINDOT that illustrates, uh, the whole distribution of this two point, about two and a half billion dollars. If you follow the flow chart, this is what I'd like to point out. We're going to be, in regards to municipal state here, we're at the lower, lower right hand corner. If you want to follow that flow chart. So of, of that amount, over two and a half billion dollars annually, 95% of it is allocated to either MINDOT at 62%, counties at 29, and cities over 5,000, 9%. So the city has, uh, our share, because we're of that 9% of the whole, our share is based on like every other community. Our share is based on population at 50% and MSA construction needs at 50% as well. Designating MSA, uh, street routes are generally have the highest ADT traffic levels like I indicated on the map because they draw the most meets. Fergus Falls in 2023, our allotment was $1.1 million. Uh, this is for construction and maintenance. Of that, the construction funds is 75%, which is accrued in our state aid account for eligible construction projects. The other 25% is our maintenance we consider unallocated, uh, that are submitted to the city in two payments, January and July. A portion of our maintenance funds are also used to supplement our snow plowing efforts and everything annually as well. So just moving back to the portions, uh, how I mentioned 50% is population, the other 50% is based on needs. The needs of, are now based on traffic counts and are set, set up as a continuous with some exceptions. So just referring back what I mentioned, I believe a few times already, our, our MSA roads are generally our highest ADT level. Highest ADT traffic. With those traffic counts that are conducted by MINDOT, I believe every four years about those traffic numbers are then determined with, uh, the eight separate pavement widths based on different traffic loads. Obviously, when we have a higher traffic amounts, the, uh, the pavement thicknesses, pavement needs are that much more expensive. Hence, our allocations are as such. So as I mentioned, these designations can remain on a system for 20 years. If we remove them off the system, we're subject to repayments. Uh, we have, system revisions have been made and they're made by city council resolution, as we discussed, have probably happened recently in the city county jurisdictional swap, uh, but it must be approved through a commissioners, commissioner's order. So just to give you a little background about the system and everything, and I, like I said, I, I highly recommend going through the literature and everything as well. Uh, I can't recall how many, it's like I said, to be an MSA, MSA city have to have a population of 5,000 or more, but I don't have how many statewide. But these funds, how I mentioned, this formula is distributed statewide, uh, from the highway user tax distribution fund. So let's answer any questions you might have. I just would like to note too, on the state aid route, uh, just to talk about eligible items. MINDOT does have a list of what are eligible items, but in general, any street pavement, curb and gutter sidewalks, things are all eligible through the state aid accounts. What are not eligible are like street escape enhancements. For instance, if we want to have stamped concrete or things like that within a right of way, those additional costs are absorbed by local agencies. So it's very basic needs, what state aid, what are eligible under state aid, uh, guidance, so.
Thanks, Brian. Any questions for Brian on the municipal state funding?
Actually, there's one question. Does it roll over in the sense that if you don't spend the 1.1 million in kind of, in the year of its allocated?
Yes, good, good question. Yes, we, we are able to roll it over. Uh, you got to be very careful too, though. You will get a decent of balance if you're carrying a high balance. We, uh, we do have a pretty good balance right now in our funds. However, uh, based on all the projects we have and everything, pretty much we're looking at our cash flow. A lot of our state aid accounts, that money is being allocated already for future projects. But yes, there is a decent of balance if you maintain a high balance in that. They want you to spend the money down. I think it's about two and a half times, three times your allotment, annual allotment.
Thanks, Brian.
Brian, just out of curiosity, are there different funds that are, um, for towns that are less, populations less than 5,000? Or do they just, like, are they main highways that run, I'm just, anyway, it's not, don't spend a lot of time. I was just curious if.
I can't really answer. I'm not aware of what their, you know, levy, they may be fortunate to have a trunk highway or a county state aid system in there as well, but no, they're not anything under 5,000.
Sure. Any other, thanks, Brian. Any other questions for Brian before we move on to the PCI? All right.
Questions? All right, moving on. Agenda item number two, well, I just want to give you a little background about our icon pavement management system. Um, in 2006, the city of Fergus Falls implemented this icon pavement management system. This is web day software administered by Goodpoint Technology. Uh, the pavement sit, icon pavement management system software is utilized by a lot of municipalities for street infrastructure asset management. I believe Otter Tail County has the same program as well. But in general, just to begin with, this is a data collection, uh, consists of a special, highly specialized vehicle equipped with, uh, collection devices such as cameras and measuring devices. This vehicle then travels our street network, uh, while collecting, recording street surface deficiencies such as potholes, patches, fatigue, cracks, transverse cracks, uh, and then also quantifies those corresponding quantities as it travels these streets. Uh, once all this data collection is completed, uh, it is analyzed and recorded into the icon pavement management system. Then it develops is what we call the payment condition index, the PCI, uh, from the, these street surveys. Uh, the PCI is an index number of any given street we have in the city of Fergus Falls. Uh, it can range generally from 100 being excellent to a zero being failed. Uh, the PCIs are utilized as a supplemental decision making tool when we're evaluating the streets that we either want to resurface or reconstruction. We still go out and do field reconnaissance as well, but this is just gives us a, a snapshot of what we're looking at in a, the given the street network. So we do this data collection. It's recommended every four or five years. Uh, we last did it in 2016 and 2022. This is funded through our municipal state aid maintenance dollars that we just discussed. So I just want to show you a few things I extracted and it's also included in the demo and everything. I give you, I just wanted, I really like the top screen showing your projector here. This is just, if you really look at this, you know, with your PCI index 100 being on your left top. It's just in, and then if you look at the two keys, uh, this really just illustrates if you study this enough and everything, how the importance of doing preventive maintenance, potholes, patching, crack filling. And then seal coat, mill and overlay. So essentially by doing these at the right time, these strategies and everything, we're basically extending the life of our payments as well. Uh, and you obviously can see the curve basically going down, uh, with no maintenance and everything. Obviously, the life cycle of that pavement is not going to last too long. So the whole idea is we're trying to use the right strategy for a given road and everything at the right time. Uh, by doing this, we are trying to extend the payment lifecycle. Obviously, nothing will last forever on that, but we're just trying to use the dollars correctly and everything to extend that life. If you look demo, this was extracted, uh, these pie charts here on the lower left. Uh, this was, uh, taken out of a, a few years ago, we did a pavement study with SRF and everything. So as you can see, these are, uh, with the keys below and everything, we've been kind of maintaining. I know it fluctuates and everything, 73s to 60 and everything, all the way from 2012, 2015, 2018. Now I had, if you scroll down, Lynn, please, on the next. This is, this is what the icon pavement management system is projecting over our street work, network. Averaging a PCI of 69. Now with the pie chart and everything, uh, you can look at what are very poor streets, they're getting 1%. Uh, and with the most specific ranges and everything, so I guess.
Brian, this, uh, PCI for 23, is that after the work is done this year? That's where you're going to, that's where it's at right now?
No, actually it's projected, so if I, no, we last did a survey in 2022, so no, it does not include.
Okay.
Work that's currently going on is not included in this right now.
Okay.
It's an ever evolving, doing data input and doing that, so it's a large amount of data that we have to. It's erroneous in some aspects, but we're constantly, when time permits, updating the system and that, so it's very important we do that.
If you said this, I missed it. So in 2016, what was the, was it, it was in the seventies, wasn't it? It was in a PCI like, you know, low seventies? But did, I'm sorry, is it on this other sheet?
About 2016, we averaged a city network average of a 70.
Got it. Oh, I didn't see that sheet, sorry.
So as of 2023, and it's what you might want to note if you interpolate a little bit too between, you know, kind of range on the pie charts and everything. Uh, we've been, per the program now, this is, uh, we're averaging everything. Everything seems to be trending a little bit better. Obviously, we want to get to excellence, you know, the green as indicated there. And, uh, per this program, we seem to be getting there at some aspects, but we also got to take care of, we're trying to target the streets that are in the fair. Uh, right now, we try to target those for like the mill and overlays and this, in that nature, in that fair PCI range. Anything below that, we try to reserve for reconstruction or major rehab, uh, primarily because if you're doing a mill and overlay, then certain extents, a mill and overlay can grow. Uh, so basically you're throwing good money at bad, if your road's too far gone at that point, so.
So Brian, um, if you look at our budgeting from 2016 to 2022, I think we doubled, right? Like the known overlay and the, we doubled the, like the repairs, like the seal code and the mill and overlay. So is there data to take out of this, like as far as where, if you're going to invest more money in streets? Where it would, it would go in the, I guess what I'm getting at is reconstruction versus mill and overlay. If you look at our PCI numbers, and we've significantly increased the mill and overlay and, and the, uh, seal codes, but our PCI is going down, right?
Yeah, yeah, you can look in the very ways, yes, we have, and the money's been appreciated. We can only go farther in doing larger projects just with our mill and overlays and everything. Uh, you know, but we're also, keep in mind, we're dealing with roads that have been around for decades too. You can resurface it so many times, but until the structures of the pavement is going to eventually deteriorate where we got to reconstruct. So that's why I mentioned, you know, mill and overlays have their extents, just like seal coats, everything. We're at time, we're just prolonging deterioration, no different than any other community. Uh, but eventually, yes, the structure, the pavement structure is going to fail and hence we got to reconstruct. But I just want to note too, you know, the, in regards to the PCI, this is, we're talking about our streets. You know, when we have, make evaluations for reconstruction candidates or street candidates and everything, we got to look at our utilities too, our street, our storm. Uh, for instance, our sanitary sewer, we're going to televise it, we're going to, we're going to try to determine if the services are bad. We're going to determine if it's a trenchless application or if it needs a full reconstruction. Water mains are no different, storm as well. So when we're evaluating a street, we just don't look at the street surface or the condition. We're also trying to take in account what's beneath under utilities. Utilities and streets have, um, different decay curves. Obviously, utilities can last much longer than the street can as well, so you got to take that all into account. And when we are doing resurfacing projects as well, we're, we're trying to look for known issues. For instance, this Union Lincoln project. We start out because we're simply doing a resurfacing project, however, that's two and a half million dollars for a resurfacing project. So when we look at projects such as that, we're looking for known utility issues. Yes, there is some aged water main, uh, but like I said, once again, no different than any other community. We try to get the useful life out of these water mains, things of that nature, but there's always going to be risk. You know, we could resurface, just like on a reconstruction project, there's always going to be risk of a system failure somewhere as well. So I just want to make that very clear, but we are trying to maximize too, the life of our water mains, the life of our sewers as well. But we're trying to get insight to what the conditions are, and I think we do a pretty good job of it, uh, but there's always going to be risk with things.
That's a, that's a good point to emphasize, excuse me, good point to emphasize. I think when I was running for council in 2016, I sat down with you and you explained that concept to me of, of, you know, that we have to take into account the age of the infrastructure underneath the street so that we're not redoing a street, then digging it up again five years later. And that's when, when, when I talk to people about streets, that's one thing that I, that I will always bring up, that, that is kind of a, an aha moment for people. So, um, I just think underscoring that point of, of it's not just what's on the surface, but we, we don't want to get hasty and, uh, and redo it before we fix what's below. So thanks for bringing that up.
Correct. So just to recap the PCI, like I said, this is a tool we use. When you look at all of your infrastructure, streets are your heaviest asset, uh, next to your sewer, water and everything. So it's very important that we keep up on our PCIs and so we can look at our funding levels versus the overall condition of our city network. Basically, are we spending enough to maintain a certain PCI of our street network? Are, are we spending too much or not enough? Just like a lot of other communities and everything, funding is limited and our PCI. So we're doing the best to try, at least try to maintain. I can assure you, we're not overspending right now on our streets and everything, but we're no different than any other community, so.
Question, Scott?
Is, when we look at the pavement part of it, you've got ways to come up with a score. As you mentioned, the utilities, is there a formula then for rating the utilities that you use? Or is it just a, looking at dates of construction and historical records and whatnot? But is there some type of a formula that you actually use for the utilities, the water sewer, that type of thing? Or is it more just the understanding of it that you have and with the people that are in the department that work with you? As, you know, rather than some kind of, you know, formula with a bunch of numbers?
Right. No, good question. Um, yeah, there, there is, you know, I'll talk about sanitary sewers right now. Our, our best, other than our ASBILs, other than age, will do televising, non-destructive testing, where we'll run a camera through the pipes and everything and do a visual inspection, look for deficiencies. Water mains are a little bit more trickier and, uh, there is, there is, we've, I've explored it and there, as well, there's, there's, there's consultants. There's companies out there that's, what they can do is do non-destructive testing on your water mains. Um, basically using a lot of devices and everything, running basic current through your waters, determining thicknesses of pipes. However, there's a, there's a few things I question on that too, because a lot of failures in water mains occur at your curb stops. Fittings, penetrations, we consider that are in the water main pipe itself. It doesn't quantify that. But when you look at the cost, just of doing some of that non-destructive testing underwater main, I believe when I ran the numbers, it was pretty much a third of the replacement cost of the watering itself. You know, that's quite a chunk of money and everything. Given it will give you a, an idea of what your pipe condition is, but it's not giving you an overall picture if you're going to have a failure on a water service or not. So not said discrediting, it's not a good product and everything, it's just a sheer cost comparison to doing the replacement cost for water mains, so. And that, you have a, a lot of data too, and data handling, updating and everything, just like the icon pavement management system, takes a lot of staffing as well.
Yeah, just kind of, uh, um, off on a tangent, is it, you know, I, I think we did a project where we, we relined some sewer pipes or something like that, uh, out by, uh, out on Lincoln? Uh, a couple of years ago or whatever. Is that something you can do with water mains? Is that an option? Put a, put a new liner in them? Okay.
Yep.
And is that relatively cost effective? Are we going to talk about that?
No, we can.
You just got to look like, like, hold on.
Yeah, uh, answer your question, yes, we, we, we look at that and everything as well. But you got to look at the environment where you're trying to replace those as well. Traffics, uh, traffic counts, payments, you know, restoring payments is considerable and everything. Uh, we have evaluated that for more transmission lines, but just like sewers and everything too, you can do pipe bursting or linings. It's very dependent to replacement cost once again.
Okay.
And you're, you still have to deal with your penetrations, your curb stops, everything for your waters and everything. It's a little bit more difficult, plus, uh, disinfection too, because you're a public water system as well.
Yeah, sure.
There, there is that technology, it's not readily used primarily in this region too as well, hence that drives up the.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Brian?
Yeah.
Just a question too, um, with Union, and to bring this back up again, um, there was an issue that we're talking about lead too. With what's going on now, and with that situation, that's going to come up fairly soon, I believe, isn't it? With the state of Minnesota, aren't they making us test all these, uh, supplies and see if there's lead in the water system? You know, where are we at with that, uh, with regarding to Union? Because I heard that's a pretty bad stretch in there.
Yeah, you know, I'm not spearheading quite that project and everything like that. I know we're doing the inventory of it and everything, and just like a lot of programs and everything, we, that's where we have the inventory and then funding and everything as well. So I, I, I can't speak on the exact timelines right now.
So, so I'm kind of assuming that when we redo Union, that would probably be the time when that whole thing's going to get done. Is that, would that be correct in saying maybe? That once that lead issue maybe has to be taken care of, that that whole thing would be done then?
Are you referring to like reconstructing it?
Yeah.
Absolutely. I, I will note too, our policy with the city when it comes to reconstruction project in the past and presently, when we are reconstructing projects, when we come across lead service lines, we will not hook onto them on private property. So we've been doing that for many decades.
I do understand that.
And so when we do come across, and that's when we notify the residents and everything and get them replaced and everything. So in the past, are we going to have to enhance it more with this lead service inventory? Yes, we're just waiting as things develop right now.
Okay.
And there is a physical inventory of every single property in town, hook, every hookup, correct?
There will be.
Do you want to update on that a little?
Sure, sure, as long as, yeah, that'd be great.
So as of yesterday, um, our first round of attempting the inventory was completed. We hired a seasonal employee who was a retired water department employee, Kevin Neck. He went around to all the properties that were identified as questionable. We didn't know if it was copper, lead or galvanized. So he finished that, uh, inspection of, um, 480 some homes. Forty to 50 homes he was not able to get into, so we're pretty close to having that inventory done. And the, uh, deadline for that still is like 14 months off.
It is identified by the age of the home, I assume, or just in?
No, not necessarily, because a lot of homes have upgraded to copper, so, and our records hadn't, so. He had to go into a lot of homes that, yeah, the pipe material had changed, records just didn't reflect that. And so it was a quick inspection, but it's, yeah, it was about a, he started early June and just finished yesterday.
Was that throughout the city?
Yes.
The guy?
Yeah.
Thank you, Guy. Other questions on the, uh?
So on, on that one leg, Len, what, I mean, of the 400 and sort of like 30 that he did get in, how many of those? Do you have, was it half of them?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Chad, the water plant supervisor, he's entering all that data and I'll have that pretty soon. I'll share that with you.
Any other questions on PCI before we move to the CI?
Yes, can I miss it, Brian? Who pays for that, this PCI, when you do it? We pay it, there's a homophysip or the state?
Yes, yes, we, we pay that, uh, we have an annual installment at least of $500. And then the survey, if we do it every four to five years, through our municipal state aid maintenance funds.
That's a vehicle that comes from outside in, I assume we hire the?
Correct.
Whatever the equipment is that comes in.
With all that equipment and everything, and we tell them what streets are, you know, that coincides with our icon, what streets travel.
I thought the only other question on that is, how do we get an estimate for 2023?
2022.
Uh, 2022, yeah. No, the, this, this one, this one, the projected.
How, how?
How do we determine that?
Yes, well, that's when we do the survey and update and everything, it's running projections through all the road segments and everything. It's got natural decay curves and everything, and that's what they're projecting that at that time.
So from 2022, that's when they did the inventories, 2022, is that right?
No.
Other question on, on that one. Is that the, you know, if we went 2013, 2015, 2018, then we go, we kind of have a gap in there, is there a reason that we?
I think some of it was COVID, you know, during those years and everything, a lot of things were.
I was just kind of curious that, I mean, we kind of technically, we look like we're improving, but it doesn't feel that way. I mean, that, yeah, I mean, we went from obviously 18 being 60 to basically, you know, now being at 69. And I'm not sure if we polled the residents that they would agree that we went up by 15%. So I'm, I'm just questioning the analytics of kind of a model that projects that we're improving. When it, it doesn't physically seem that way.
I think, your honor, I think with the biggest thing, we've talked about this in the tax lady committees, we need to fix the roads that our people drive on. You know, we drive on the majority of the time, you know, we fix the residential streets and we don't see that. And so we've talked about this, that what, what's going to be the number one thing in the future to fix, you know? And, uh, and I realize that the, the residential ones need to be fixed too, but that's why I think that number's going down or getting better is because of the residential that's getting fixed. And we don't see that, and the, most of the residents don't see that, except if you live in that street and you're happy.
It'd be, it'd be interesting to see the actuals compared to the projections.
Well, I think it's based on, I mean, it's a good question because I'm trying to look at the data too, but it's like 2022. I mean, I wonder if this is, we can get into it when maybe in the CIP process and funding and. when maybe in the CIP process and funding and stuff, but I wonder, if you look at our increase in funding for the repair maintenance, that would show up, I mean, it's all going to show up in the PCI. But it's the major reconstructions that are necessary that people really feel it. Like they really see, they see these streets that are completely, you know, gone, and we're not doing anything to. They're going to stay in this. So, so I mean, I think that's part of the, you know, I think that's part of the formulas, like they feel, they really feel the Juniors and the South Unions and those ones.
And how many streets did we get from the county that had just been redone when we did the road swap here a little while ago? And I think a bunch of the roads that we got from them, they had just redone. And if those come up under the PCI, they're going to come up, you know, because I think, oh, God, some of yours, yeah, a bunch of those were completely redone before we swapped.
Can we do that again?
I think, I think the other thing is, as we're driving around, we only notice the bad roads. We don't, we don't think anything about when we're driving on the good roads. We just notice the bad ones.
If I may, with the PCI, I, I completely, you know, yes, there, there is, this is a very objective approach, uh, looking at it. And like, I just want to stress, like, when we, this helps us, guide us, give us guidance and everything, but when you're choosing candidates, we will do infield reconnaissance. And sometimes we kind of, you know, look at the information that we review it too and everything, but we always, this is just helps us with our decision. This is, you know, what people may be subjective and everything, which I, I understand. Uh, but this is, you know, this is just a guidance tool and everything as well. But we've been exploring other tools and everything, but there, like I said, there's not a lot out there. The county uses this too as well. So.
Yeah, I think that's, you know, a really good point to make is that, that, you know, like a few others have alluded to, it's, I mean, it is such a subjective thing. I mean, you know, one, a person might only drive one route to work, and there's one bad spot on that road, and so therefore all the roads are bad, you know? And, um, and, and so you gotta use something that's got hard numbers. I mean, it's, it's kind of all we can do. It's, you can't really, you know, poll people's feelings, you know, or, or quantify that in any way. So, um, you know, one, one idea that just popped into my head that, um, that maybe Gene could help us out with is, you know, we, when we're, when we're doing these projects, get some pictures of, of how bad the road was, and then when the, the project is done, get some, you know, and then just post it before and after to social media and say, look, I mean, we're, we are making progress on these roads. And I think, you know, and it's not always going to be the road that's out in front of your house, you know, it's, it's, it's just not. But I mean, I think if we can give, let people know, you know, the resources that we're putting into the process and, and, and show people what we've been doing, I think is going to go, um, a ways toward, uh, helping people feel better about what we're doing on the roads.
All right.
I'd like to make a comment. I think that's a good way to put a spin on it. Um, I guess I take a very unscientific approach to see if a road is smooth or not. For example, I've got a cup of coffee here. If I couldn't take a sip of a cup, up a cup of coffee because I'm driving, that's a bad road. And there's a lot of roads like that. You know, take a boiling hot cup of coffee and go for a drive, and then you'll see where your roads are not very good. Um, I do agree that some roads have been fixed, but there's a lot out there that are really, really bad. And we need to really figure this out on what we can do to get these things taken care of, because I hear about it all the time. People in Ward Three, people throughout the city, even people who come into the city, even vacationers that are out in the lakes. And, um, I think that we really need to figure something out here, you guys. And we can't be putting spins on things. We need to have real answers and real fix-its. And with the projections, you know, projections are projected. And, uh, uh, what Brent brought up too, was some of these roads that were basically given to the city. Yeah, that's probably part of that, uh, those numbers that changed it. So, you know, we really got to get it figured out, you guys. I mean, it, it's just, I hear it. I don't know what you guys are hearing out there. Tom, you may be hearing something totally different. I don't know. Um, and all you other members. But we have to be very frank here. And so thank you very much for letting me come on.
That's what we're here for, to find solutions. So let's, let's get on, move on to that with the, uh, CIP. Uh, I think we're all here to find solutions. So, um, thanks for that. Brian, you want to move on to the potential projects?
Certainly.
And then funding sources, doing fine solutions?
I prepared this here. Uh, we've been looking at it. I, just moving on, um, just want to go over a few. You should have two additional handouts and everything for you. And I'm gonna hand out a projection. Uh, this is enhancement, what's been posted on, uh, the city website. Uh, I'm saying enhanced and everything, uh, because I just want to point out, we've been looking at potential reconstruction projects upcoming, and we ran some cost estimates here as well. That's broken out between the streets, sanitary sewer, water, and storm sewer. But just wanted to point out of the, I've had corresponding SL spreadsheet as well. So Project A, uh, showing up on the screen and everything, there, there's a second handout. Uh, that's a project we're looking as a potential candidate. I'm hopeful to bring it to the city council to start initiating this project. Uh, as we know, the street's very heavily deteriorated, the utilities as well. We've started data collection as, um, doing that. And like I mentioned, I'm hoping to bring that to you in the near future here. But that's showing on the projection as Project A, uh, with a total estimated cost of about five point five million dollars. Uh, other candidates to consider and look at which have not been initiated are, are Project B, which is the Union Avenue, basically from Gus Davis to Alcott. Uh, estimated full reconstruction of that about five point nine million dollars. Moving on to Project C, it's Douglas Avenue, kind of from Calvin to Union Avenue. Uh, full reconstruction of that about one point six million dollars. Moving on to another project area we've been looking at is Project E, uh, Sherrington, Arlington, Bancroft area. Uh, full reconstruction of that, we're estimating about three million dollars. Um, moving on to another one, Project E, showing on the screen right now, that's Washington Avenue, Sheridan, Junius, a portion of Junius and Burlington Avenue. Uh, full reconstruction of that, we're estimating about four point eight million dollars. And then finally, Project F, this is Cleveland, Franklin and Fur Avenue. Uh, we're estimating that project at a full reconstruction of about five million dollars. I would like to note, these are just candidates we're looking at, but we ran cost estimates to give you an idea about the amount of money it costs to do full reconstruction. Uh, these, we don't have a year construction assigned for these projects. I want to note these, these are estimations at this time. Uh, street funding, it may consist of a combination of special assessments, PIR bonds, state aid, what have you, that's not been determined other than a potential full amount. Uh, and also too, the reconstruction primarily consists of street and utility. Concrete curbing, curbing gutter, walks are replaced as needed. Uh, but, and also just to note, of these projects right here, these are referring to as reconstruction. Uh, we still do our annual mill and old relays and seal coats too, that's not shown on this. But I just want to show you on this map here, project areas we're kind of looking at, uh, for potential reconstruction candidates in the next five years. Um, none of these have been initiated at this time, but if you look at the total combined estimated cost for Project E, B, C, D, E, and F, we're about twenty-six million, one hundred thousand dollars already. So.
Hey, Brian, question, just so I can have an idea of, um, Cleveland Avenue. I, I remember the last time that one was reconstructed, which I believe was like two thousand and six. And so if we look at, going back to your PCI and this sheet here of regular maintenance and extending the life of roads and stuff, this is like, is this a, I didn't see a time on the bottom here. Is this, is it thirty years? Is that, what's that, what's, should a lifespan of this? If, if the proper maintenance is done, what's?
They're indicating about fifty years, if you're trying to time fifty to sixty years.
I think that recon you're talking about stopped at Franklin?
Yes.
And this would be taking?
So this was not reconstructed?
Yep. Yes. To answer that one, yes.
Thank you. Let's stop that line. Okay, thanks for that, yeah.
Just to clarify, is reconstruction sewer water too, the whole thing?
Sewer water, storm, um, full path of new section as well. Some instances, we will remove the entire curbing gutter and sidewalks, but.
Was Cleveland ever done recently? I grew up on Cleveland. I don't remember ever being, seeing it being done when I was younger and up to this point.
We didn't have records then.
Yeah. Stone tablet, Anthony.
Yeah, when the horse and buggies were there.
Yeah. It was dirt back then, Jim. No, I, I was just saying, you know, that was back in, uh, right, uh, I know my parents moved there in nineteen sixty-seven, and I don't remember that road ever being tore up and redone, uh, since, before the, you know, after that.
From Summit to Franklin, up there, right?
I, I can look up specific dates.
I was just kind of curious.
That's where that limit was of that, that time. But in regards to what I'm referring to here, it's Franklin to, um, Fur Avenue.
Okay.
All right. So obviously, I think we all appreciate the fact that there's lots of projects that cost lots of money. So I think the important thing is to talk about current and future funding sources that, how do we get this stuff done? All right. Go ahead, Brian.
All right, I believe I'm done. If there's any questions, I liked the conversation. Please contact me.
I think one, one thing we should maybe look at, I don't know how historical you're going to get, but, I mean, technically from two thousand and eighteen to twenty twenty-three, we're, we had, in eighteen, we had about eighty-two percent of our roads that were fair or better than that. We're projecting that in twenty twenty-three, we're going to be at ninety-four percent. So I think it'd be interesting to look at the data that says, and probably dollars aren't necessary because of inflation, it's hard to, to say, but look at how many miles that we've actually improved since eighteen to twenty-three, because whatever we've done from eighteen to projected twenty-three, we've, we've raised the bar from eighty-two percent of roads to ninety-four percent of roads being fair or greater. And, I mean, and if you look at it, that in two thousand and seven, we had ninety-five percent of our roads that were kind of fair or better. And then we went down, and then we went back up to ninety-six. And then from fifteen to eighteen, whatever happened in fifteen to eighteen, we dropped fourteen points in that time period. So it would also be interesting to see what we didn't do then. You know, did we not repair any roads during that period of time? You know, did, did we curtail what we did? Because history can tell us something on this, you know? And is it a question of how many, you know, what percentage of kind of repairs that we, that we should be doing? If, if we're going to maintain and a score, and I think that would be the other thing we have to look at is, what score are we going to try to actually maintain? What are we going to be happy to live with? You know, is a ninety-five percent reliability is actually a good number. I mean, if that's, that's, that's a number we should aim for, then that's something that we could, you know, say, how do, how are we going to make that, come up with a plan to, to, to get to ninety-four? And I don't, I don't personally, I don't think we're going to get to ninety-four, ninety-five percent on a twenty twenty-three census. Um, but if we do, then that'll be great. But I think we have to set a goal of a score and then say, right, how are we going to, what do we have to do? How many roads do we have to do to get to that score? And then what's it going to cost to get it? And then we can look at how we're going to fund it. Because if we don't have something to aim for, just saying we're going to raise a million dollars more, so what? You raised a million dollars more, that, that fixes one road. It, it's not going to change the perception that we're, we're actually doing something. So that's my ten cents. I think we, we got, we got to put a goal out there of what we want to achieve and have it measurable, so that, you know, then we've got something to go to the, the people and say, this is our goal, this is how we're going to get there, and this is how we're going to fund it. And then it becomes measurable on both sides. You know, if we say we're going to fix, you know, twenty miles of roads in the next kind of two years, then we either fix them or we don't. And if we, if we don't, we failed, and then we can analyze why we failed. And if we get more done, great. I think just talking about, like, we're going to raise another million dollars is fine, but doesn't get us anywhere.
I, 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 thanks, man. I appreciate that. Just leaving my two cents too, because I think that you're, I think that's what, part of what we did back in eighteen, I think that's where we started to increase the seal coat and made, and the crack. And we did increase the PCI index over that time. And we doubled it since then. But I do think too, like, raising big amounts of money to do major reconstructions is important. So I think that both, I mean, we have to have a goal in mind as far as a PCI, which is seventy or above, I think is historically, um, where we should shoot for. But then also saying, hey, these are the major reconstructions that we need to do over the next five years. Where is the funding going to come to do those? Because increasing by a hundred thousand dollars or twenty-five percent of a ma, it's not going to get it done. So I think we need to set two goals. And then also say, which, which are the reconstructions we're going to get done that need to be done? And where's the money going to come from? That's my two cents too.
I remember when we, um, Brian, when this, we had the presentation on this PCI, when SRF did that, and I think that was, didn't that spit it out? One of those things they were talking about was you, as a city, choose the PCI that you want for your city. So choose the goal, and then that kind of feeds into what are the revenue requirements to meet that goal? One thing that comes to mind with this twenty eighteen, and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but was the Mount Faith project in twenty nineteen? We did that whole section over by the old gym. In twenty nineteen, I think it's the twenty nineteen bonds when we issued. So that was a significant, you know, you had Summit and those streets in the Mount Faith area that were, that was complete reconstruction again. Um, water, sewer, storm, and streets. So that certainly would have impacted that. That, just when you were saying twenty eighteen, I'm like, I think those are the twenty nineteen bonds for that. But, so, should we talk a little funding sources? Um, you'll be happy to know or maybe not happy to know. I have no answers today. We're just going to talk a little bit about, um, where we're currently at, where fun, some of those sources are. And Lynn's got, um, this I just pulled out of our budget document from last year. This is from the twenty twenty-three budget. So I just wanted to point out a couple of things. So when we're talking about the maintenance, mill and overlays, so that's our annual maintenance, we don't capitalize those costs, we expense those in the year. In that top line, general fund, that's the general operating fund of the city. So we have our street maintenance department in there, snow removal department in there. So within that is where we have our vituminous overlays and seal coats annually. And in twenty twenty-three, that's four hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine twenty. Um, I know, just at one of our last meetings, Brian came in, you know, we're, um, going forward with our overlay projects, we moved some of the seal coat over into overlays. So we do that all the time, just move between the two line items. But that's in the general fund, that's in your general property tax levy each year. That's the one where we've been increasing, you know, a couple of years of twenty percent. I think we did a ten percent increase in that one year. Um, so that's, that's that one. Where, when we talk about, um, mill and overlays, that's just, you know, like when we plow the streets for snow, this is where we put seal coat down or overlay. So that's one portion of that. Then I highlighted the green section, and we don't have a lot of levies left in there, but when you do a reconstruction project, so like we're doing the Summit, Linden, Laurel area, um, kicking that off, we'll probably bond for that next year, probably combine that project with the Stanton Avenue project, and then bond for, um, a portion of that. And then the following year, a levy comes on for that. So that green section, when we say PIR projects, that's, um, Permanent Improvement Revolving Fund. The city has this revolving fund. Um, it's all related to assessed projects, when you especially assess a project. So that's a levy section as well. So we're levying tax dollars up in the general fund for maintenance, and then reconstructions when we have a bond take place. Um, so you can see the, um, twenty twelve is, um, Fund Four Twelve, and the twenty nineteen project would have been that Mount Faith project. This is just the street portion. Again, um, the utilities underneath, we build that into our utility rate structure. So when we project out utility funds for ten years, looking at what are the revenue requirements of a utility fund to support these kind of capital improvements, that's where Brian's page now here, we'll build this into that rate structure, see what would rates have to do, um, compared to what we've had in the capital improvement plan, to what this would mean now. So, um, we'll build that in, we'll look at that as we go through the budget process. So, um, we'll build that in, we'll look at that as we go through the budget process, and we come back in the fall each year with that utility, um, process. Brian talked about, um, those MSA dollars. So we have a couple of different funds. So again, back to that Fund One-O-One highlighted in yellow. The, um, twenty-five percent maintenance dollars goes into the general fund. We're only allocating seventy thousand of a two-hundred-plus-thousand, um, receipt of those dollars into our annual maintenance. The rest of it is there to apply towards projects. So if you do a reconstruction project, if you have to supplement a bit with those municipal state aid for streets from the maintenance dollars, we do that. And then the Fund Four-O-Three, um, on here, down towards the bottom, that's where the construction dollars, the big municipal state aid for streets comes into that fund. Again, this is just the tax levy slide, but I wanted to, all the different funds we levy for, just to put it in a little bit of perspective there. So bonds, levies, special assessments is part of that also. So when a property is benefited from a reconstruction, it's just like your house is better when you put a new roof on. Your property is better when we reconstruct. So like in that Mount Faith area, we are levying some for that, but also the homeowner was assessed for a portion of it. We've talked about that in the past, about how we go get appraisals done of, um, from an external appraisal, appraisal firm of what's the benefit to that property. Cause you can't assess more to a property than what that, um, property has benefited. As we know from the look of this, twenty-six million dollars is a lot of money. How do we pay for that? Um, one thing we've talked about, we talked about it a couple of years ago, we've been talking about it at the, um, Tax Levy Committee, is franchise fees. So that's something we wanna talk a little bit about today. Andrew, jump in if, if I miss anything here, but, um, you know, that's a fee that goes on the electric and the natural gas bills for those companies to have their infrastructure in the public right of way. It gets passed on to the user, um, certainly. The last time we looked at that, I think it was just under a million dollars a year that would be generated from an estimated franchise fee. Now, Andrew and I met with Otter Tail Power two weeks ago, where we will be getting numbers from them on what would that look like today? And also if we put some caps in for major users. I think that million dollars didn't have any caps, um, fixed in there. So we wanna look at that analysis, if we were to cap the franchise fee, it's, say, five percent of the utility bill, up two X, so for a major user. We're looking at that, analyzing that. If we did that, that would be a dedicated funding source restricted just for pavement, just for street, um, dollars. It would be segregated in a separate fund for that. But that's one of the concept that we have been looking at. Yeah. So we definitely wanna hear your thoughts on that. Again, we'll be talking as the Tax Levy Committee about that. Andrew, anything to add about that?
No, I mean, the only thing I would say is the franchise fee, you know, is a new funding source. And if, if we don't identify new funding sources, ultimately it falls on the property taxes. That's the only way for us to, to raise this bar without significant help from the legislature. Much, you know, we continue to see, um, marginal increases in aids, but certainly not, uh, at the rate in which we need to, to be able to keep ahead of the curve that we're seeing with inflation and, and all these projects. Um, the one nice thing about a franchise fee is that, uh, everybody pays it, including people that are tax exempt or people that, um, you know, are renters in an apartment complex, or, you know, it's really an equitable way for everybody to, to contribute funds towards the streets that everybody uses. So, um, I think there's an argument to be made that as we look for additional funding sources, this is a good tool to ensure that it's equitable, and, and people that aren't paying anything in property taxes, but utilizing the resources would also be contributing, um, to the public benefit in this way. So, um, certainly would love to see other funding sources and revenue streams as well as we look ahead to some significant investment in our, our roads. But this is really the, the tool that we're seeing kind of take off statewide as, as the tool for streets. So, yeah, we'll, we'll bring, uh, numbers back and, and different scenarios back with, uh, proposed caps as we get those in the coming days. And, uh, if the council wishes to move in this direction, the Tax Levy Committee's talking about what that may look like, um, to infuse our budget, and then preliminary, preliminarily talking about a January one start date, if we wanna go down that road. So there's a little bit of work to do, but, um, we're on that track until the council tells us to, to hit pause.
Also, the Tax Levy Committee has been discussing about, when we look at levy dollars on that side of it, we wanna, you know, as we build out these capital plans, what's the right balance of, how much do you put in mill and overlays versus that, um, and I think Mayor, you were alluding to that, um, how much into reconstruction? So, you know, you don't put it all in one bucket or the other, but what's the right mix on that? So that we are resurfacing, overlaying those roads that are the right targets, like what Brian has said, and then these reconstructions that we're seeing the big dollars on. How much will those levies relate to debt service payments then? And what's that balance? So we wanna be able to bring that back to you as well.
Um, I don't know if I didn't hear it earlier, but I, I think when we brought this up once before, also if we put in a franchise checks, that means there will be no more levies, or no more, uh,
Assessments.
What's that?
You're talking about assessments and-
Assessments on people's property.
We had talked about that, but that's, we're not looking at that right now. Assessments would still be in the mix. Some cities have done away with assessments, but if we do that, then we're not really gaining much on more roadway because what we're doing is replacing a funding source we currently have instead of bringing in new funding sources. So that's something we have to talk through.
But I mean, how much of this, how much of our cost is involved, like when we do assessments on these properties as far as doing the appraisals before and after on a property? I mean, as far as saving on that?
And we do one, is it like nine thousand dollars a project for doing, uh, an appraisal?
Oh, fifteen thousand.
Fifteen? I was low.
Inflation.
Yep.
Your Honor? Uh, quick note on franchise fees. I, I would be in, in full support of a, uh, an exemption for public education institutions. I don't think that we would wanna burden those systems anymore with, um, any additional fees. I think any other private enterprises, uh, um, you know, should be eligible. But I would, I would like to see a way that we could, um, you know, cause I think for M State, when they looked at the numbers, it was, last time around, it was gonna be a pretty significant, um, investment on their part. And, uh, so that's just my two cents on that.
And I would say, Your Honor, I was gonna refer, hold that thought for now. When we build these scenarios, I mean, we may be looking at caps of like two hundred and fifty dollars a month.
Sure.
So it's not, we're not talking like significant impact. So, um, if the scenario that we land on seems to the council to be a little too high for somebody like that, let's have that discussion at that point in time.
Yeah, that's a good point.
But let's just see where we come in with those scenarios.
Sure.
Cause it might not be a huge number.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that.
Yep.
Scott?
Something that would be helpful for me would be just in real round numbers, how much we've been putting into annual work on the streets, whether it was road construct, reconstruction, or mill and overlay or whatever. But let's say we were spending, you know, two million dollars a year roughly for the last six years, whatever it is. Maybe it's four, maybe it's one, I don't know what the number is, that's what I'm looking for. But if we were on average spending, you know, two or three million dollars a year, now we've got a list of twenty-six million dollars worth of stuff that we'd like to potentially do in the next five years. Okay, if we're only doing three million a year, and that's what our pattern has been, we're not gonna come close to making this. So it's more a question of, compared to what we have been doing, what's the number that we need to be putting in the streets per year going forward? Then we've got some way to kind of weigh this number. I mean, twenty-six might be doable, it might be impossible. But I, I need some way to, uh, figure, you know, compare it to what we have been doing, to say, if we keep doing what we're doing, you know, we're gonna do half of this. Or if we keep doing what we're doing, we're gonna do a third of this, or whatever it might be. So I could use a little help with that. You know, granted, there's been some big years and smaller years. This is the big year, we got Union, Lincoln, lots of big things that are gonna show. Maybe we've had other years where we haven't quite done as much, or maybe it was spread in a different way, but it was still the same dollar amount. But I could use some help with that.
Thanks, Scott.
So, Brad?
I can't remember if I talked to Andrew or Bill about this in the future. The biggest pill I have, it's hard to swallow, every single time we get a project, whether it be across the road over here, every single road which we're gonna have these projects forever is an engineering cost. I mean, you're talking a hundred thousand here, five hundred thousand there, two hundred thousand here. It adds up into a very large chunk. I mean, is there any way, I mean, that we could do this, hire the appropriate people, do it in-house, and actually come out ahead on this one? Because that's where a lot of our funding goes to. I mean, it's a very large chunk, and I have a hard time swallowing that every time we get a project that comes out. I mean, I'm just trying to figure out, would the cost of a project like we're doing across the road, would that cover alone in one year, the cost of what it would cost to hire and do a main, and then they'd be available for all other projects that the city does? Because the projects, whether it be something like that, or the roads, are gonna be non-stop. I mean, is it feasible to, to have us do this in-house? Are there cities that do an in-house, and are they coming out ahead?
Thanks, Will.
Good question. I needed to a little thought on that and everything. I, I just wanted to note, when it comes to engineering fees and everything like that, that project, it's, it's a streetscape, it's more in-depth and everything. The fees and associated fees versus a road reconstruction are two different rates and everything to begin with. But I want to note that we actually are doing that right now. The Summit Laurel Project right now is done in-house.
Okay.
All administered with my department. We tried to maximize it the best we can, based on the resources we have.
Okay.
Somewhat limited. And also the project also, I'm presenting kind of the eight and a half by a lemon at Maple area too. We did the data collection as well, and we're hoping to do that all in-house, but that's a five million dollar project.
Okay.
With staff and everything. So we try to take advantage of that first and foremost, so. But yes, when it comes to street reconstructions, yeah, we have the ability to maybe hire more staff. We all know what the market bears to as well right now. We are fortunate, we do have good consultants around here too, they'll, they'll work with us on some of these reconstruction projects. So we can evaluate if we haven't as much, we try to use the resources we have, so.
Okay, I was just kinda curious, cause when I, I see those numbers, I tell you, it just irks me when I see some of the major ones, and it's just like, oh my God, the amount of money we're paying for engineering. I mean, would we be able to do that in-house?
If I also wanna further note, when it depends on funding sources, federally too as well, between the environmental, there's a heavy on the administration. Between working federal government and the states and everything, we don't have that amount of resource to do all that tracking during the DCP delegated contract process from the Federal Highway Administration. So we do need consultants with that because that's a lot of specialized work, uh, especially if you're audited. We need those consultants for that type of work, so.
All right. Thank you.
Just to, um, maybe I'm, I, I know I'm gonna compare apples to oranges here, but maybe to get back to what Scott was talking about too, as far as, you know, coming up with a number and putting things in perspective and figuring out where we're at. You know, with just a few of the, the, let's say, take four projects here, Riverfront, Splashpad, D Lagoon and Pool, what's the total amount for all four of those? Just a guess, I mean, you kinda know what it is, but, um, you know, is that, are we looking at thirty, thirty million on that? Just to, as far as, you know, and that's gonna be paid for what in? I think the, the Splashpad and, uh, the Pool, or the Pool was gonna be over fourteen years and, and D Lagoon, I think it was. Was that it right, Andrew?
Yeah, I think it was fourteen, the sales tax would be in for fourteen point two five and-
Yeah.
And of course, the funding sources play into that.
Right, and-
Because of course, we can't use the sales tax for streets.
Right. But could it have been used if we would have kinda tried to put it in with something like, you know, you know, piggyback it?
We did bring that up in our original, weren't we looking at a street project for Nor, for Union or-
Yeah.
Which we had to take out. I think the legislature said no streets in sales tax. Is that right, Andrew?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's right.
They have to be regional projects, and we tried to work in a, yeah, it was North Union, I think, is what we-
If we could-
Did St. Cloud do some-
Have that dedicated funding source.
Did, did St. Cloud do something like that, or how did they piggyback something in there?
They gotta, they've-
An extension of their existing something.
Back in like the late, late two thousands. St. Paul actually had a real struggle this year to try to get an increase for their streets. Duluth, you know, the years, a year's struggle, Duluth got a half cent on their streets, but it's not easy. And we, yeah, we, we had initially, as one of the four items that we were gonna look at for sales tax, but ultimately came out of that proposal.
I was just looking at it as far as numbers and, uh, you know, what, what maybe could be done. I know that sales tax can't be used on that. But maybe if there's other avenues that we could use to get that, that money. But I'm guessing it's gonna be about the same, twenty-six, thirty million dollars to fix our roads of what we probably just did in the last four projects here, that's gonna be coming up. So, you know, that makes it, you know, sixty million if we put this other twenty-six million onto it. And, you know, we, I think we need to get kind of creative to figure out how we can do that, because we, we do need to fix our streets. And, uh, Scott, did that, am I way off what you were asking there? You were trying to get some kind of comparison, or?
Well, I think it'd be helpful to be able to explain to people, look, we spend X million dollars a year on roads, and you can look and see what has been done over the last several years. That's what you get for this amount of money. And if we keep spending about that amount of money, we're gonna get this kind of results over the next coming years. So if we're able to increase that by a third or something, you're gonna get this many more roads going forward. That would be a real small, uh, kind of ballpark type way to get people an answer that I think they would like to hear.
And I think it's-
That they could grasp, you know, you, this is too much to grasp in a short conversation with someone who just says, when you're gonna fix the streets? You can say, well, we fixed what you've seen in the last five years, it cost us this much, we can do that again in the next number of years, or we can add franchise fees, we can do this, we do that, and we do twice that much, or half that much, or, you know. That's what I'm looking for, something that you can give an answer to somebody, that's, you can get a handle on, you know, for a one-minute conversation.
I, I agree with that. I think that, um, you know, people are more willing to understand, you know, why their taxes went up or why the utility bill went up, because, hey, it's gonna fund this, and it's gonna fund this amount for this year. I agree with that one hundred percent with you on that. I like that idea. If we can get some kind of a, a, a number in there, say, hey, if we're gonna fix this, it's gonna cost this, we can get this done for your, for your tax dollar.
Yeah, thanks, Alan. Scott, to summarize the kind of the conversations that have gone on in the tax levy, it's, it's exactly that. It's like, you know, hey, um, to look back on that four hundred and fifty-three that up on the budget there, it's four fifty-three, four fifty-six, I can't read it, but anyway.
Yeah, within our maintenance dollars?
Yeah, four hundred and fifty, that, just to give you an idea, that was a hundred and eighty thousand, if I remember, in nineteen, I'm sorry, nineteen, in two thousand and seventeen when we started to increase. So what the tax levy is saying is like, hey, that's not, we still have these twenty-six million dollars of reconstructed road needs. We're going to need to bring some new revenues into this if we're going to repair these streets. So that's what the tax levy's considering, and gonna bring some options hopefully, um, sometime in September, right?
Definitely, we'll be bringing the budget before the council, probably at the first meeting in September for action on the proposed budget at the second meeting in September, cause we have to have it to the county by the end of September.
So if we're gonna make these significant investments, wanted to give the council an opportunity to kind of digest, get a, get a feel for where the tax levy's at least leading, and then bring some options to the, to the council in September with that initial preliminary budget.
You know, one, one kind of big picture idea that just popped into my head as we were talking about this, and, and not to minimize any individual residents' concerns about the streets, but what, you know, we're looking at spending twenty-six million dollars so that we can cruise around with our boiling coffee. But what's our, what's the economic benefit that comes from putting all this money into streets? Granted, I understand it's something that needs to be done, but, um, it's, it's, you know, in, in comparison to the projects that we've, that we've recently passed and have, have started, you know, we haven't been investing in those projects non-stop since the city was founded, whereas our streets we have, you know? And, you know, and to me, um, I, I fully support, you know, bringing the streets up to, you know, reasonable level of, of smoothness, but, um, I say it over and over and over again, we live in the worst place in the world to build streets, and, and, and what is the economic impact that we get? You know, I haven't made it out to the lakes to do a lot of informal polling of, out of towners, but I've never gone to a city and thought, oh, this, these streets are terrible, I'm never coming here again. And if I run into a bumpy stretch in town, I slow down a little bit, you know? So we do need to take care of our- I slow down a little bit, you know? So we do need to take care of our infrastructure. We do need to invest in good roads, but ultimately, what do we actually get out of the deal? And that's just kind of a thought to pose to everyone, you know, to think about that. Yes, this is important, but what do we get out of it? What's, what's the tangible benefit?
I can answer that.
I can answer that, I think.
You answer, then I'll answer.
I guess a prime example is this, and it was in the Daily Journal about somebody that had complained about private parking lots. And it was said, well then, don't patronize that business. It's economy, it's money that comes into the city is what it's affecting. And that's where it's at.
Do we have a non-anecdotal way to quantify that measurement?
It was said in the paper.
Oh, okay.
If you do not, if, if you don't like the business that has a rough parking lot, do not patronize that business. So let's keep the focus here on solutions and I think there's different opinions.
I think, no, I mean, on answer to Tom's question, I don't, I don't think it's necessarily, it's economic benefit, but more because if you, if you do predictive and preventative maintenance, you will avoid that major catastrophe is down the road. So you're never going to have 100% perfect roads. And so we have to accept that there's going to be a level of repair to all roads. Even, even the brand new road that gets put in today will, will within a matter of days or weeks start to have imperfections. And by repairing the roads, we will avoid then obviously, you know,
Yeah.
Further destruction of the infrastructure. So I think it's more that you have to have a plan. You, you, you will never have 100%. So you have to accept there's going to be some roads that are not perfect.
Yeah.
And it's, as you say, it's, and that's where I think we have to start with a score of what are we prepared to accept?
Yep.
Because we can't have perfection.
And I, and I get that. I think just, just everyone keeping in mind that, that, you know, perfection isn't the goal here.
No.
And we just have to find that compromise the best we can and get the best return on our investment.
And I think that's why, you know, what I said earlier about looking at, what have we done between 2018 to 2023? Because we went, we're going from a score of 82 to 94. So I think building on Scott's question, if we can see how many linear feet of, you know, seal coat we did, how many linear feet of, you know, mill and overlay, how many of reconstruction and then put dollars to that, you know, that's what we have to maintain doing if we want a 90-plus score. And then, as you say, then we can look at, from Bill's perspective, you know, did that, how much of that dollars came from state aid? How many were from the tax levy and how many were from assessments? And then we can build that to the $27 million budget.
Yep. I think that sounds, that's a good point.
Bill, did you have a-
Yep, we have all that data and we'll put that together. I can envision, we'll come back with a map of, here's what we did over the last five years, here's what the costs were.
Yep.
And here were the funding sources for that. We balance those projects every year between Brian and I and how were they all paid for? So we've got all that. We'll just need to compile it and we can bring that back at one of our next meetings, so.
I think the other thing we have to look at is, we're not going to get this all done in one year, people. It's going to be over time, five, 10 years, whatever it is for all these projects. It's not going to be done all right now. So you have to keep that in mind, that we don't need to come up with 26 million tomorrow.
No.
But we've got to do it over time.
So the Tax Levy Committee, which to remind you is Councilmember Laura and Scott, Rachels, myself and Andrew Brumseth, and then of course, Bill and his staff. So if you have questions or concerns or, you know, thoughts that you want put into whatever is brought before the council in September, make sure you talk to one of us. Happy to take that feedback. But the point is to bring this as part of the preliminary budget with some, some more numbers and some plans for what level of investment the city is willing to make, where that's going to come from and put that plan together. So any last questions? Yeah, Scott?
There was a lot said as far as what our P C I scores were. There's been a fair amount of, you know, weight put to how valuable that number may or may not be. And just again, it might be helpful to understand the formula for that. If it's just based on total miles, when we do a project like last year's seal coating of up in the YMCA neighborhood, you know, that covered quite a lot of area and improved the area for that neighborhood. But frankly, most of the people in town never drive around up there and so they're not going to see it. And so to what degree, a project that covers a fair amount of miles and maybe increases, increases our overall P C I score nicely, but it's not something that people see, if that formula was weighted more toward where the miles are actually traveled, you know, like on Union or Lincoln, maybe it does. I don't know that it does or doesn't, how that formula works. I don't want to get into the weeds about that, but it just seems like it would be helpful to understand that formula a little better. If it's just based on simple total miles, we can do a lot of projects in areas that people never see, get a nice score from it and say, well, you've improved our score, but no one's going to see it. Do you follow me?
I do. I just want to bring in and not to myself play amateur engineer here, but I think that those, you know, the improvements of those stretches are important because you're extending the life of that for 25 to 50 years. Definitely valuable. Collapse. So it's, you know, the engineering part of it is, I think, important too. Gotcha. But yeah, I think that that's important. Brent?
I just got a couple of questions. One's for, for Guy. When we're talking about the smoothnesses of the road, some of the overlays that have been done where they've literally just overlaid, they've went over the lower part of the curb and everything else, and they, they raise it up, yet the manhole covers are still about this far down. Now, I know, is there a ring that we can put in some of those? I mean, some of the worst ones, I mean, because they've literally jarred the crap out of my car going over them. And thank God I don't drink coffee. But needless to say, is there any way a ring can be put into some of the worst ones and then raise the lip up and so we can?
Yes. Before overlay projects, we do go around and raise up the valve blocks, the risers and the manholes. But yeah, there are a few around town, bottom on fur that need to-
Yeah, the big ones that I see. And if they can go up, I mean, because I mean, if you're talking about people not coming to town because of the roads, I mean, that's ridiculous, because you take a look at Duluth, worst words I've, worst roads I've seen in my life and I keep going back. So.
Moreheads are pretty bad too. Yeah, we're not allowed.
Did you have anything else to ask?
No.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I just, I just wanted to say, look at everybody who's drinking coffee. I made my point today. It was great. I appreciate that very much. People will remember that. And I'm not in the minority who is not drinking coffee. So thank you. Just a comment. Having fun.
The whole thing is you don't, you use an open cup.
And I did.
Jam.
All right. Thanks, everyone. We'll be bringing something to the council in September for adjournments.